We'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2018, 2019 to order. It is now 6:30 PM. Would you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bob from Impact Christian Church? And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our great God, Father, we thank you as we gather on the heels of a day that has embarked in our history, reminding us, Father, of those who have died, that we might be able to assemble here in this room freely, and to share our opinions and guidance, seeking your will for our lives. Father, we thank you for all those who have lived in this community and have died in the service of mankind. Father, as well, we pray tonight for wisdom. We pray for guidance and knowledge. Pray for a sense of encouragement for our families and for the young people graduating from high school. For those students who are yet learning, Father, we ask your grace and mercy upon them, that their ways would be smooth, that the learning would be good. We pray, Father, for those in leadership in this community, whether they be in the fire department, the police department, the service departments that manage our streets. God, we thank you for them, and we ask your blessings upon them as we gather together. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Currie.
Span.
Here.
Minchuck.
Here.
Darren.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamaka.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Here. Six present. We have a quorum, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Mr. Fires.
I have none this evening.
Okay. The only thing we'd like to acknowledge, we'd like to acknowledge, we'll let you do it, Sean. And Dran.
Oh, yesterday, the Andran 59ers came, actually, the boys and the girls won their sectional in softball and in baseball, and the baseball team did it in dramatic fashion in the bottom of the seventh inning, reading the newspaper. I read your newspaper, Chaz, and Karen. So, once again, Andran is ranked 23rd in the country of all baseball teams in the United States. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
They are, right now, they are 32-1, and on their way to the regionals. And I'll tell you what, if you haven't had a chance to see this pitcher, you need to get out and see this Michael Doolam kid, because he is phenomenal. Cubs blue, Bruce.
Cubs, right on. Okay, okay, let's not.
They need the pitching help, Rich.
See, I'll let you do one thing, and then right away you want to start. Okay, and then one other thing other than that is that I am going to reappoint Bob Forster back to the Visitors Bureau. I've got that, I've been getting that call from Mr. Baptisteros, and so go ahead and get that letter off, Bruce, tomorrow.
Will do.
What's his title?
Who?
Bob Forster.
He's just a member of the Visitors Bureau.
Town of Maryville. It's our appointment to the...
Every city town gets an appointment.
Do you have to be a Maryville resident, too, to get that?
To be appointed from Maryville, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all I got. Consent agenda and council paper register voucher approval for May 28th, along with the approval for the town council meeting minutes for May 8th and May 14th.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve the consent agenda with one correction on the minute from May 14th. We need to, for the, the motion to close, they said Mrs. Lamaka seconded, as opposed to Ms. Lamaka, unless, unless you know something that we don't know. So, we'll just make that correct. Yeah, I know, that's, I'm just, I saw that, and I just wanted to make sure we made that correct. I didn't want people misinterpreting what they were reading there. Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Standing committee, budget and finance, Councilwoman Barron.
Yeah, I'd like to call Budget and Finance meeting July 9th, 6:00 PM.
July 9th?
Uh huh. Oh, no, I have to call 5:00. We'll call 5:00, at 5:00.
Should I get ahold of Taggy for that?
Yeah.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck, anybody have anything for Public Works? Mr. Fires.
President, I'll take this one if Bruce doesn't mind, since this happens to be in my ward, but this is awarding of the bid for East 73rd Avenue and County Line Road Rehab Project. This was part of the Community Focus. What's the title, Bruce? Community Focus Fund?
Community Crossing Match and Grabs Through the State.
According to this letter from First Group Engineering, to Bruce, the low bidder was Walsh &amp; Kelly for $1,182,442.75. I make a motion, we award the bid to Walsh &amp; Kelly based on this letter from First Group Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Lamaka. Thank you. That we approve the award, the bid for the rehab project. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else on the Public Works?
Mr. President, back to Bruce on this community crossings, is it, do we have another project in town, Bruce?
Yes, we're actually opening bids June 11th for the Whitcomb Street Project, which is also Community Crossing Funds, and that runs from US 30 South. It changes names three different times, but we all just call it Whitcomb Street, and it ends up at 91st Avenue.
Are you sure that's not 93rd Avenue?
No, it's, it's 91st.
It goes to 91st. That's where all the big podos are?
Right.
And that's what's going to be done?
Yes, from 91st North all the way to US 30. It's going to get all rebuilt, so hopefully it lasts for a long, long time. Hopefully.
Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamaka.
Yes, I asked Bruce to schedule a meeting for June 25th at 5:30, so that we can finalize the pet ordinance.
5:30?
June 25th at 5:30.
Rich, what time?
June 22nd, 5:30.
22nd?
June 22nd, 5:30.
Where's that, in the back room?
25th.
25th. Thank you.
At 5:30.
June 25th in this room, back here?
Yes.
Okay.
Personnel, Policy, Employee Benefits, Councilman Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had an executive session before this meeting, and I'd like to schedule another executive session for June 5th at 5:00. Did we say 5:30?
Yep.
5:30.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report at this time.
I got a couple things for you, Joe. Get a lot of complaints about noise. You know, the people are riding through the neighborhoods late at night, early morning or whatever, and they're making a lot of noise with their radios. So, I had a conversation with one of your officers this morning, and I asked him that, you know, when they're out patrolling, you know, between 9, probably 9:00 and 11:00 or something, if they don't have anything, no calls or anything, if they could just sit in that area along Jefferson Place, and just observe that, I would appreciate it. Okay. There's one more, but I can't think of the right one. Parks and Rec, Councilwoman Lamaka.
The ambulance contract?
That is, yeah, thank you. The Councilwoman Yuzelak.
What, on Parks and Rec?
No, under Public Safety for the ambulance.
Oh, okay. I have no report at this time.
What about the ambulance service agreement?
Well, the service agreement, when, when did we do that? I can't even remember.
May I interject? On the, on the Superior Ambulance Service Agreement, what happened is I was contacted by their in-house counsel. They had a couple of recommended changes as to the agreement to come into compliance with state and federal law. I reviewed it with in-house counsel. I agreed to the changes, and I think it's in the town's best interest that we go ahead and approve the amendments to the contract.
So, sounds good. You approved it.
Is that your motion?
Pardon?
Is that your motion?
No, second. I need a motion to go, I will give a motion to go ahead and approve the ambulance contract.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Span and Councilwoman Barron, that we, that we approve the ambulance service agreement with Superior Air-Ground Ambulance Service. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Parks and Rec, Councilwoman Lamaka.
I do not have anything but agendas.
I do. I would just like to report that Impact Feast Study is complete, and after Taggy has a conversation with our attorney, we'll place it on the Plan Commission's agenda, which has to approve it prior to it coming to the council. The Park Department is still working on the master plan. The plan requires us to hold two public meetings. We held our first meeting about a month and a half ago. Our second public meeting will be held at Puzyn Park on June 18th at 5:30 PM. And the Park Department also has planted all of, if the council remembers, we were going to take over the gateway signs. We planted all of the gateway signs with perennials, and this way we won't have to continually plant them annually, they will come up every year. The only gateway sign that we were unable to plant was the one on US 30 by the Radisson. It is not conducive right now for us to get into that area. As soon as we can, though, we will plant, that'll be the last one that we plant. The last council meeting, it was reported that Centaur Bank, and I don't know how much information you had, but Centaur Bank, I contacted them to see if they would consider underwriting or sponsoring our concerts. They are, so they are paying for the stage, the sound, the talent, the lights, and Centaur Bank will be supplying banners for the concert on the stage, and we also contacted St. Peter and Paul Church and Christian Revival. They're allowing us to use their parking lots. Centaur is going to provide the banners that say "Free Parking" for the concert for that as well. So, we're pretty excited about it. The Northwest Indiana Times will be doing a couple of promotional ads, not only for the concert, but they're going to do a little write-up about Maryville and Maryville Parks. So, you can look forward to that coming up soon. The Park Department also has added programs to our lineup. We've added a cardio kickboxing program in the evening, a nutrition class, an evening ballroom dance, and right now, our classes run Monday through Thursday till 7:30 PM, and Friday is our early day. So, we kind of have a full schedule, a couple of hours in the morning or afternoon where we don't have any classes, but first time we've gone four days out of the week until 7:30 PM. We've also received quotes back for the Savannah Ridge Playground renovation. I met with Jeff Minchuck to go over the quotes. We have chosen a playground. The equipment has been ordered for Savannah Ridge. It should be in the last part of June or 1st of July. When the equipment arrives, I will coordinate with Public Works on the installation of the playground. And lastly, we are now receiving applications for the Independence Day Parade. If you know of anybody that's interested, the application for the parade is on the town website. You can simply download it, fill it out, and send it back to the Park Department. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else on the Parks and Rec? How many choirs do you have for this Saturday?
I have four. Tanya Goleins reached out to New Bethel and Friendship Church. Unfortunately, one of the choirs, the members are pretty old and don't want to travel outside of the church, so we're still back at four plus, I believe, the sopranos. So, four and a half, almost five.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give you a call about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Fire Bill Affairs, Councilwoman Barron.
I have one thing to announce, and that is that Lake County Solid Waste closed the recycle center at the Lake County Government Complex because of all the illegal dumping that was going on inside the, all the recycle dumpsters. Matt, do you have anything?
Yeah, I want to let you know, we completed a comprehensive review of the sacks and apartments. I know this is a hot-button topic because of the issues in Broadfield subdivision. We did it in conjunction with Robinson Engineering and Christopher Burke Engineering. Our preliminary comments were sent to Toranga Engineering for their review. We will also be presenting at the Plan Commission Workshop on June 4th. I've just kind of given overview of, you know, our analysis and our recommendations and our requirements, so. So, also, I know you had a resident here that lived on the north side of Maryville, and there was concern about, obviously, issues with lateral six, and it fills up so fast, and there's very little room up there with regards to any opportunities for detention. Christopher Burke is studying, actually, areas in Gary to look at opportunities to bypass a partial lateral six to reduce the amount of flow that comes into Maryville, so that'll be interesting once they finish their findings, which should be probably about midsummer. So, we'll have a presentation on that at our Storm Board meeting, and that's all I have.
Economic Development, no, sorry. Election, Public Relations, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report at this time.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, we had a Economic Development Committee meeting a couple weeks back. The committee heard a proposal from Paul Thurston of Becknell Industries, who has developed the northwards crossing on the east side of Mississippi in Marcella and Holbert. He also built the new building south of Menards, that is now occupied, and he would like to build a new 269,000-square-foot building south of the railroad tracks, and has asked for the same tax abatement that the town gave him on the north side of the tracks, and we'll see that in a resolution later on in the agenda.
Utility lands on Councilman Span.
I had some of the red dot trees that Nip Score are cutting up in my ward. They seem to be leaving a lot of sections. I called, and they got a little of it up, so we're still waiting, but they're doing something, so I'm not going to complain.
Speaking of that, Bruce, did you hear anything else from Nip Score about the...
I have not heard back from, from Rick, because I sent him an email. I think I copied you on it.
Yeah.
Let me follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Abandoned properties, no report. That concludes Committee Report's general orders. First reading ordinance, ordinance 19-13, that ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the local road and street fund for the year 2019, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve ordinance 19-13. Any discussion? Roll call.
Span.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Darren.
Amen.
Pettit.
Aye. That really threw me off.
Lamaka. And Hardaway.
Yeah. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 19-14, that ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 18-31, and pay for the employees of the town of Maryville, Indiana, for the calendar year 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve ordinance 19-14 on first reading. Any discussion?
Bruce, what's the change?
There was, I don't have that in front of me. Stacy's position, the salary had to be changed for her moving over to...
Okay.
The fire department was one, and there were some administrative items on the last page that were changed for the police department.
Okay.
Roll call.
It was for all town employees. I'm sorry. It was, okay, it came from... We noticed it, and it was for all town employees.
Okay. Roll call. Span.
Yes.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Darren.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamaka.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 19-15, that ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established C2 community commercial zoning to PUD planned unit development district.
So moved.
Stackhut.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve ordinance 19-15 on first reading. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Anderson on behalf of petitioner in this case, so any discussion?
You don't look anything like your dad.
Sorry about that, yeah.
No, you're, no, that's a compliment. You even walk like him, I'm just, scary. For the benefit of the other members that don't know, Marjorie and Roxanne and I on the Plan Commission, this is the 11 acres on the south side of 93rd Avenue that is going to be developed as Bell Tower Assisted Living Mike, is that right?
That's correct. That's exactly right.
There'll be six buildings on the acreage.
That's right, and so we're asking for PUD approval because of the state's requirements that we have individual buildings rather than a single building.
And this, what's the investment?
I don't have that number in front of me right now.
I think your dad said seven, did he say seven million?
It's significant, yes.
Seven million.
It's planning to be a 60-bed facility. The hope is to get at least 48 beds approved by the state in the next couple, next month or so.
In the Broadway, too.
Okay, anything else? Roll call.
Roll call. Aye. Span, do you got...
Yes.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Aimeen Slidary.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamaka.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries 6-0. That concludes first reading.
Welcome to town, thank you.
There are no second reading. Ordinance is resolutions. A preliminary resolution of the town, of the town council of Maryville, Indiana, approving real property tax abatement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve Resolution 19-13. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Resolution 19-14, a resolution of the town council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, authorizing notices of public hearings regarding a preliminary determination to issue bonds or to undertake a lease, a lease financing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve Resolution 19-14. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That concludes Resolution VZA Action, Case Number Z19U-V5-0419. The petitioners, A1 Affordable Signs and Neon Company, Inc. The owner is First Properties, requests variance of use approval. The purpose is to allow a LED electronic message center at 2300 West 81st Avenue, zoning the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District.
Good evening. I'm Ray Thomas, Affordable Sign Company, Vice President from 534...
Can you hold on for a second? Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting a variance of use approval from Section 21-189-8 to allow a LED message center to be located at 2300 West 81st Avenue in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. USA Mufflers and Brake has an existing 4x10 that will remain. Petitioner would like to remove the four-sided 4x8 marquee sign and replace it with the new double-sided sign. The total, the 4x8 color watch fire electronic message center, the total square footage will be 80 square feet. Petitioner would like to advertise business products and services. Petitioner will promote town events where requested.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamaka, that we approve Case Number Z19U-V5-0419. Any discussion? If you had something you wanted to say.
That was it, I just wanted to introduce myself, tell you why I was here.
Okay. Any other less said, better, less said, better. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, have a good evening.
You, too. Case Number Z20E11-0419, the petitioner is Miriam Sartser Dakka. Owner is 80th Place LLC. The request is special exception approval. The purpose is to allow Asian Filipino restaurant with a mini bar and specialty grocery store at 40-44 West 80th Place, zoning the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting special exception approval from Section 21-136 for a restaurant with a mini bar serving beer and wine and a mini Asian specialty grocery store to be located at 40-44 West 80th Place in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to open a Filipino-Acean restaurant and grocery store to be known as Tropical Island Cuisine. The restaurant will have a tropical island setting and an ambiance serving mainly Filipino food with a few choices of common American foods. There will be 12 tables and 70 seats, three tables with the umbrella outdoors. The restaurant will serve beer and wine only. They will be open on Tuesday through Thursday from 9:30 AM to 9:30 PM, Friday and Saturday 9:30 AM to 11:30 PM, and Sunday 9:30 AM to 9:00 PM. There will be approximately eight employees. Petitioner has been in contact with the Maryville Conservancy District for this petitioner only at this location only and for this use only.
Good evening, my name is Miriam Chaika, and representing Tropical Island's cuisine, and my husband Alan Chaika. So, yeah, we will be northwest Indiana, there is no Filipino-Acean restaurant in the area for long years, and with our expertise of, we've been in business for six years, operating Asian grocery store, so the demand of customers, they're demanding a restaurant. So, that's why we are really very eager to get this happen, and actually, I always, I already received a lot of calls because we're on newspaper, and they were calling when we cannot open the restaurant. So, yeah, we're, we're projecting to open second week of July, we have to move it a little bit because of the renovation. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamaka, that we approve Case Number Z20E11-0419. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Are you going to be serving balut?
Oh, absolutely.
You like it?
All exotic, all exotic Filipino-Acean.
Balut, I'll tell you later.
Case, Case Number Z21E12-0519, petitioner is Dr. Lonny J. Jarvis, the owner is Tiger Group LLC, the request is special exception approval for a church, 7870 Broadway Suite INJ, the zoning the C2 Community Commercial Church. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is David Parker.
Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting a special exception approval for a church to be known as the Edge Church, located at 7880 Broadway Suite INJ in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. There are 25 members, and regular service times are 10:00 AM on Sundays and Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12, 12 noon. The parking is adequate. The other tenants have, have businesses from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. However, property owner has allotted four parking spaces for the Edge Church immediately to the east of the entry doors. immediately to the east of the entry doors facing Broadway. The parking is reserved for the pastor and staff. The property was approved for the church in December of 2012, Z34E7121, Mountain of Fire and Miracle Ministries. Petitioner and owner were not aware of the special condition placed on the previous church, which is for this petitioner only, for this use only, and for this location only. Petitioner is now operating the church, the attorney has a copy of the lease. This petition has, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman La Marco, that we approve case number Z21E12-0519, any further discussion?
Yes, what denomination is that, your church?
It's non-denominational.
Non-denominational?
Yeah, we're, um, full gospel, open door, you know, policy.
And one pastor?
One pastor, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, welcome.
Thank you for your time, be blessed.
You too. Case number Z22E13-0519. Petitioner is Lena Kessel, the owner is Randolph Street, to request a special exception approval for a massage therapy, 8081 Randolph Street, C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Staff report, please.
Petitioners requesting a special exception approval for a massage therapy location to be known as Lena's Therapeutic Massage LLC, to be located at 8081 Randolph Street in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to operate a massage therapy location that will offer therapeutic massages, Swedish massages, therapeutic massages, deep tissue massages, sports massages, and the hot stone massage. Petitioner is licensed and specializes in clinical massages. Petitioner will be the only massage therapist at the location. The hours of operation are as follows. This location will be closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, open on Thursday and Friday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Sunday, 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance, the attorney has a copy of the lease agreement for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Motion to approve, what discussion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, uh, any discussion?
Uh, Sheila, I don't, in, in the past, we have required the ability for the town to see the guest book, the registry, remember, Rich? We've had these massage therapies before, and I don't see that, Joe, I don't know if that came up in discussion at the BZA. Sheila?
It did not.
It didn't, huh?
Not come up for discussion.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, I mean, we've done that in the past, and to be fair to the other ones that we previously, uh, approved, uh, I think we need to, I'll, I'll add that as a condition, that the guest register be available for town inspection.
And again, as long as we're keeping our, uh, rules and, uh, ordinances consistent, and I think we're doing this in this case, then if, we'll, we'll make that as a condition, man. If you can just accept that condition, then we'll have the ability to inspect the guest registry.
Yes, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
Yes, will you be involved with anybody who medicinally needs a massage or some type of therapy, clinical therapy?
That's mostly what I'll be doing, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will also be running, uh, Groupon for our first-time clients, just to advertise. But most of what I'm doing is through insurance, and it will definitely be on call.
Okay, and are doctors able to recommend your therapy?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Very good.
And when this petitioner came up, she has extensive licensures and, and different types of training. So, um, that was, she was asked about that at the, uh, at the, at the BZA level, so.
Zoning?
BZA level, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome. That concludes BZA Action. Any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your public comments to three minutes. Any public comments? Any public comments? Announcements. Stormwater Management Board meeting June 4th, 2019 at 4:30. Plan Commission Workshop meeting June 4th at 6:30. Police Commission meeting June 7th at 8:00 AM. And the next Town Council meeting will be June the 11th, 2019, at 6:30 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Who made a motion, who seconded it?